Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, February 12, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first and only registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, who I do not see here and not online, so we will move, we will come back to him if he arrives. We will move on to comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Javone F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's right at the top of the hill, Bedford. Yesterday, I want to address this to you, Mr. Lavelle. Yesterday, when I seen the people, Mel Good's daughter, son, and the gentleman that was standing with him, that you didn't say who he was. So it confused me. I thought it was, when he spoke to me, the gentleman spoke to me, I said, "Oh, Mr. Lavelle." I thought it was your grandfather. And I said something about your grandson. And Mel's son said, "No, that's his father." So when he said that, I said, "Mr. Lavelle, you need to know that your son will not speak to me," and he doesn't show me any respect. I'm telling you because I felt that you didn't show your father respect. How come we didn't know that was your father standing there? Your father, you just said Mel's daughter and the son. Now, Mel's son, the only reason why I said something to him, because Mel's son looked so familiar, but he's lost so much weight, his small face. I'm telling you this, that when I come down here to City Council, I come down not just for me, Mr. Lavelle. I come for the community. I have, you have some people coming, like did one woman come and explain in Squirrel Hill, she has the little adopted foreign child and how someone helped her. One of you council people helped her. Ms. Montez took and spoke about Ms. Gross and how she helped her with her son and praised Ms. Gross. Let me understand, let me tell you so you understand. I'm not just coming for me. I'm coming for a lot of senior citizens that live up in the building. Katie Marie Ervis, where we have a terroristic, domestic terroristic person. Her name is Rashida McKinley. She has threatened me, now her mother just threatened me too. They're threatening me because she said, "I came down here to City Council. She needs to mind her own business. She needs to shut her mouth." Okay. I go to the manager of the building and I said, "Fair warning. I am in clear and present danger. I am being threatened," and she is talking to me. Well, the manager said, "Oh, don't say you're afraid." And then I was saying, and she talked to me, and she threw her big breasts up in the air. Well, she don't talk to me like that. Well, she did come in the building, and she did, and she had the manager. They ended up on the floor. She had attacked the manager, saying, "What did you say to my mother? Do you understand?" When the manager told me that I should just ignore her, it's just a form of intimidation. This woman has been banned from the building from 2020. She, in 2022, my daughter, we went up to Arbor and talked about this woman. They still know she's in the building, and they will not stop us from coming in. She threatened me.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers?
Oh, good morning. Good morning. My name is Howard H. P. Jackson, Black Political Empowerment Project. Grew up with NAACP all my life in Pittsburgh. Yeah, I was blessed with Burr Brown back in the day, getting me out of juvenile court, getting me out of jail before I went to juvenile court, but that's another story. Let's advocate on how African-Americans always pursued and tried to be accepted in the country. I remember when Woodrow Wilson went and signed a document and said that, like, African-Americans couldn't go to war. That was World War I. I was just making an example, all right? For all the other accolades and what African-Americans being a part of the fabric, being, you know, the Holocaust was over there in Europe, about that Hitler fellow, but you got to understand, African-Americans been abused the whole time they set foot on the planet of the United States, America. Then we got lied to about Columbus growing up, and we all been programmed with Santa Claus and the Easter bunnies, but we never got into the fabric about education. Education. Let's unite the education, because African-Americans, they always pursued to be accepted, always had to be 10 times better. They always been used when they invented, et cetera, et cetera. So you already know the history, or people that was born yesterday. My point is, we need to go ahead and transform the education. You know, instead of George Washington chopping down a cherry tree, I'm just giving you the facts, you know. Who was it that discovered everything up in the North Pole and, you know the history and you know what I'm talking about? We all been a part of the fabric of inventions, discoveries, and our names haven't been mentioned. It's always been hidden in history. So now that it's 2025, you already know the accolades and the unification of what we've been a part of. You know, you got to think about, like, World War I and World War II. Eisenhower knew what we have done in the military, in the Army, in the wars. We didn't even get a parade. We did not be accepted. We always had to go ahead and pursue to be accepted. Now, please, accept what I'm asking for. We are the fabric of this country, and we need to go ahead and advocate to educate our children the truth, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will move on to our Standing Committee's agenda, and our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, New Papers 1459.
Bill 1459, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kittleson LLC for expert witness services in connection with a litigation matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Police for an amount not to exceed $8,071.25 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1459, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1460.
Bill 1460, resolution authorizing the issuance of three warrants with the total sum of $248,001 over one year. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows. $100,001 payable to Michael Zakatis and his attorney Wendy Williams Esquire; $70,000 payable to Martin A. Dietz Esquire; $78,000 payable to Bruce Thomas and his attorney Noah Geary Esquire in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District Court of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1460, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1461.
Bill 1461, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of National League of Cities for one-year membership dues in an amount not to exceed $19,054.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, is there anyone here that can speak to how the membership's going? Right here.
Lynne A. Lincoln, Assistant Director in OMB.
Could you just let us know just how the membership's going with the National League of Cities?
It's designed for both council and the administration. You can get a membership, just last year or the year before, I sent everybody on council the instructions after this meeting of how to join your membership or, like, activate your membership online. They have four main programs. I'm not sure who uses them all for what, but they have, like, they have four pillars for their programming. They include municipal practice, leadership and education, race equity, and risk information sharing. And so there's, like, online discussion groups and other resources that are available to all of you for any of those topics that you'd like to reach out to your colleagues across the country that are members, that are council members for their cities or municipalities. And there's discussion boards and other resources like that available for you too.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know how engaged we are from the...
That I'm not sure. I don't, there's no reporting back to, like, the membership holders of what, of who uses water or anything like that that I'm aware of.
I understand. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Lynne.
Lynne, okay, I know we met, so excuse me. But, so Lynne, we pay $20,000 annually?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we don't know who, if anybody, partakes with the city of Pittsburgh for whatever benefits this may...
I do not have that information. I don't know that that is available to us.
Right, we just send a check to whoever runs this, which is whom?
The National League, it's the organization itself, it's the National League of Cities.
Yeah, are they, they're not in Pittsburgh. Where are they at, you know?
I'm not certain where they're headquartered, no.
Do we pay $20,000 a year? I'm just wondering, like, does anybody take advantage? I personally have not picked up the phone and talked to a sister city or whatever.
I, I don't know.
Verbages.
Somebody a couple of years ago, it was before you sat there, Councilwoman Strasburger, whoever was down here said that they had, they had used their resources before, at least their online tools, so I'm...
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested. I didn't know if we had any record as to, does anybody visit there? Does a mayor visit there? I don't, I don't even understand what that is.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, it just seems like $20,000 for something. We don't really know what it is to me, but that's just my thought. I'd love to know if any other council members or anybody has anything to share.
I can reach out to them to see if they'll give me any information, but that's the best that I can do right now and then get back to you.
Good enough, thank you.
Yeah, I can speak to that a bit, but I'll let other council members go first. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, absolutely. I use the National League of Cities references and case studies and briefs and reports and resources on a variety of policy topics that I think the City Council is facing on a weekly basis. So if you haven't looked at their resources, I would highly recommend that you do so. I know, Councilman Coghill, I have absolutely used the National League of Cities research on, for example, temporary managed communities and interim housing and responses to homelessness. It's been, it's been a great, it's not the only resource we use, but some of the research you've read, I've gotten from it, so absolutely.
Full support then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
I'm very familiar with the National League of Cities, and I was hoping to actually go to their conference in December. They have a number of conferences. We're elected officials from all over the country. I don't know, Pittsburgh hosted...
Yeah.
That was about, maybe about 10 years ago.
I think I hosted a tour.
Yeah, and I know Pittsburgh.
2016, 2017?
Yeah, I think it was like 2016, 2017, Pittsburgh hosted the national conference, which was a big thing for the city. So beyond the various tools that Councilwoman Gross mentioned, it's also, you know, part of a national network of leaders, and I know mayors and city council people, many of those who I've known throughout my professional career before I was an elected official to share information and, you know, provide insight, you know, because as we know, you know, every, you know, major city in the top 50 are grappling, you know, with many of the same issues around the unhoused, around housing, around, you know, public safety and other challenges. So, you know, it's been a resource for me long before, you know, I've come to council and look forward to continue to using those resources as well as tapping in to a national network of elected leaders at the municipal level.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'll just say, you know, I agree that it's a useful resource. I also agree that we don't use it enough. I, you know, I've used their online webinars and their newsletters to find information. I've always wanted to go to their conferences, given that it's December and budget season, never quite found the time, but I would like to figure out on council, you know, who could kind of be the National League of Cities person or people a little bit more engaged, because I know in the past, Reverend Burgess was engaged, I know, former mayor and, you know, and earlier Councilman Paduto was really engaged. We have, as the new president, Steve Patterson, right here in, you know, nearby Athens, Ohio, is the president of NLC, and right here in Appalachia, right? We have, there's a lot to gain from it, so I would like to figure out, at least on council, who's maybe more engaged in going to the conferences and bringing learnings and ideas back and maybe even hosting something here, so that if we're paying this amount of money, we're really getting our money's worth. So maybe that's a future discussion point, but would also say, yeah, highly recommend joining and engaging. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1461, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1462. Thank you, Bill 1462.
1462, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for professional services relating to eviction prevention for tenants at a cost not to exceed $2 million over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Just briefly, I'm very supportive of any effort to stop eviction prevention. Where is this money coming from?
Stop the Violence Fund. We have Chief Cornell here to answer any questions he might have. Chief Cornell is here if you'd like to call him.
Chief Cornell? Can I call you?
Phone a friend.
Good morning, Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. So these funds are Stop the Violence Funds. Last summer, Councilwoman Gross introduced an ordinance that would allow up to 20% of the Stop the Violence allocation to go towards eviction prevention in the Stop the Violence appropriations for 2025. The mayor proposed and City Council approved $2 million for that purpose.
Okay. Yeah, I believe I co-sponsored or signed on to that.
Yes.
Was there a support of that? I thought the money was transferring then. I didn't realize the money needed to be a secondary transfer here, but I'm glad...
That's just our checking balance for regular agreements always have to get authorized by the City Council.
Okay, cool. Who, who, and Councilwoman Gross might know this better, who was actually going to be handling this program?
So the URA already has several agreements in place, and we thought that it would be more efficient for us to help get the funds out. The Chief Housing Officer for the URA is also available if anyone wants to call her up. I would not be able to answer that specific question right now, but I know she can.
Okay. I think I'm going to be scheduling something with the URA here soon, so I don't need to ask for...
I'll just say, there are already programs in place, and this would expand upon those.
Yep, this is a, I think this is a very, very good use of Stop the Violence Funds, so I'm glad to support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1462, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
So moved.
Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? P-cards are approved. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
New Papers, Bill 1464, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to execute a declaration of restrictions and covenants in pertinent documents in cooperation with the University of Pittsburgh over certain property and right-of-way in the vicinity of Bigelow Boulevard between Fifth Avenue and Forbes Avenue within the city of Pittsburgh as a condition of an NPDES permit granted in conjunction with street and property improvements in the area at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? I actually have a brief question about this, Director, if you wouldn't mind joining us.
Good morning. Kim Lucas, Director for the city's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you. So I know this is the area that University of Pittsburgh really took over with their reimagining of a whole corridor and green infrastructure and crosswalk and everything, and it's beautiful. Why now are we dealing with an NPDES permit and this, what seems like paperwork, but I'm just curious, like, what prompted this?
Sure, this is to close out one of the construction permits. The Allegheny County Conservation District won't close it out unless this administrative action is taken.
Okay, so we're, a declaration of restrictions and covenants, okay, so it's really just closing out a permit? Got it. I thought it might be the case. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some sort of new violation, paperwork-based violation or something from any agency that would have prompted this.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay, great. All righty, well, thank you. I have no further questions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1464, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative approval, affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to 1465.
Bill 1465, resolution providing for an amended agreement for construction services with SET Inc. for the South Side Signals Project at a cost thereof not to exceed $3,822,335.96 and increase of $542,335.96 from the previously legislated contract authorization.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Very briefly, but can I call the Director up? Thank you, Director. I, this is, I believe this is a, again, paying the bills from the South Side Signals Project that happened a while ago. This has happened a couple of times here. Why are we skidding these contracts? You know, in this case, I believe this is almost two years after the project was completed. Why, why is it that we keep seeing these things now?
Project closeout can take a while, and so that's part of our just standard work process in addition to everything else as we get around to doing project closeout. In addition, this increase is due to three specific costs that were incurred. One of them was additional drainage work at 18th and Jane and 18th and Sarah, unforeseen adjustments to the Mission Street Bridge for ADA improvements, but most relatedly was a delay claim issued by the contractor to cover their costs associated with extending the duration of the contract. So in some cases, that might be happening after the work, of course, it's happening after the work is completed.
Okay. All right, that's helpful to know. I didn't know if it was a problem with Evan Gross.
Your brother-in-law, right?
Yeah.
You can ask him at dinner.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1465, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1303, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code, Article I, introduction and establishment, Section 902.03, zoning map to rezone parcels bounded by Neville Street, Forbes Avenue, South Bellfield Avenue, and Bigelow Boulevard in the North Oakland neighborhood from multi-unit residential moderate and very high density, Oakland Public Realm Subdistrict B, specially planned District 7, urban industrial and hillside, to urban center employment and urban center mixed use in the North Oakland neighborhood.
Motion to approve.
Second. I would like to call our folks from Planning up to discuss briefly, really just to recap what we heard at the public hearing last, last week. Good morning. Please introduce yourselves and...
Good morning. My name is Christian Numba with Department of City Planning, neighborhood planner working in Oakland.
Good morning. I'm Antra Tanden, Principal Planner at the Department of City Planning in the Zoning and Development Review Division.
Thank you. So we had a great briefing followed by a public comment at the public hearing last week. You know, I wanted to recognize that, I don't know about others who represent Oakland, there are three council members who represent parts of Oakland, but we've heard from, and I think all council members have heard through the emails, through the clerk, about some concerns about this rezoning, and I just want to say, first of all, this is the Oakland Plan working, right? Rather than doing two years of engagement, passing a plan for the Oakland neighborhood, and then sitting on a shelf, this is the next step of rezoning to kind of conform to what, to help the city conform to what the public wanted in various parts of Oakland, which was mixed-use neighborhoods, mixed-income neighborhoods, vibrant neighborhoods, housing for all different types of people in a complicated neighborhood. And some of the concerns we heard were about sidewalk width, or about green space, were about neighborhood context, residential, and really, the answers that you gave really answered all of that. There will still be 10 feet of sidewalk, there still will be street trees every 30 feet, and mandatory green spaces, that it will be within the neighborhood context, and there won't be long, long swaths of buildings or walls that are opaque, that, you know, there would be kind of a better system, similar to what we have on riverfronts, that, you know, you'd have to be broken up in a certain, after a certain width of a building, or that you'd have to be able to have some transparency, you know, to be able to see and activate the ground floor. So I think that, the thing that I never got a chance to say, and I wanted to just state for the record, was, one, we can have dense neighborhoods that are also residential and friendly to all sorts of people, including families, so density can be vibrant. And two, you know, when you zone it for more than just residential, that you have the opportunity to see the types of many commercial districts pop up within residential districts that we all love, the bakery, the, you know, the coffee shop, the department, you know, the store that kind of sells you anything you need at any moment, rather than purely residential over here and way over there having to get to the commercial district. So I think having a mixed, the mixed use that people were concerned about and saying, "You could put Kennywood here, this is what it allows for." Well, 29 different zoning, you know, purposes by right doesn't mean that that's going to happen. What we're probably going to see is residential and then maybe some ground floor activation. So I wanted to state kind of my, my overarching frame of reference for this rezoning and my take on this, because I know it might be different from some people who are concerned about like an immediate change to their backyard, which is most certainly not going to take place, and also that, you know, any, any major development of a property will then still go through a community process if it's large enough, will still go to planning commission, which triggers, which triggers a RCO meeting, so, public process regardless. But, so, I know I'm talking at you rather than asking a question, but I also wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to anything else you'd heard from residents over the course of working on this for the last year plus.
Thank you for those, those comments. I mean, I think generally, in working through this, we, we are sticking with the Oakland Plan, and I think that is the number one thing, is that there was a significant public process over a few years where we really heard about the... over a few years where we really heard about the community's vision for land use and development. And these zoning recommendations directly come from, from the plan and the land use strategy and the plan. And I think another thing for North Oakland, a lot of that land use strategy was based on the existing character we see in the neighborhood and trying to make sure that the zoning aligns with that character. There are already a diversity of uses in the area. There already are a diversity of scales, from, from smaller scale to larger scale. And so, to your point about not drastic change, we're really making sure the new zoning complements and enhances the existing character we see. And that goes to the density and the heights, which we were able to show are not exceeding what we see existing, but rather allowing what is there to continue in the future. So, I think also, one other thing I'll say is in general, we, you know, we heard a number of concerns, and I think we were able to, to, you know, look at the details of the zoning to show that it addresses a lot of those, as you mentioned. And I think, based on the engagement we did, starting back in last spring till now, I think we're, we're very comfortable, you know, with this proposal as it is. And, yeah, so, I think those are my general comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I'm just curious, how many meetings did you have for this?
I can go through the timeline here. So, back in the spring, we had two working sessions. These, this was with the Oakland Plan Steering Committee members. So, these are community leaders where we really
Well, community leaders identified by themselves or by you.
Well, actually, as, as part of the Oakland Plan, the Steering Committee has to be a representative.
From a group?
Yeah, from a group.
Not necessarily always. I just want to make, be clear. Those group, any group across the city, the CDC or some type of group like that, they don't always necessarily represent the people that have lived there or have lived there for a long time. We have that in our district too, so I just want to be clear about that.
Fair.
And same for Oakland, I know.
And then, so after those working sessions, we moved into public outreach in August and September. So, we met with the Belle, Bellefoot Area Citizens Association. So, they are a resident neighborhood group. We went to the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, their Let's Talk Community Roundtable. We went to a North Oakland Block Party hosted by Pitt and Baca, and then we had a development activities meeting. So definitely more than a handful of meetings. And then we also, after the first planning commission meeting, we, we had additional conversations led by Councilmember Strasburger with some local residents.
So, I just want to say that this is just, the only point I want to make is that this is just one neighborhood in the City of Pittsburgh and you had that many meetings. And we are talking about significantly changing the zoning for the entire City of Pittsburgh with almost no meetings at all. So, I just want to point that out, that the difference is, and that's what, why there is such backlash, is because there has not been that opportunity to have that engagement for people that maybe aren't part of a community group that either don't feel comfortable attending organized meetings, but want to see and hear and have their voices heard too. So, I just want to point that out. I don't want to respond, I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, well, lastly, I'll just say, I'll echo what I heard from many community members who attended these meetings. Just, Christian, your, your patience with so many questions and so many concerns and really having to sort of explain the same, same thing to many different people, like hundreds of times, really, I think, made the difference here in making sure that people felt like they knew what we were, we were about to vote on. So, I really do appreciate that. Thank you. That being said, all those in favor of Bill 1303, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you. Bill 1343.
1343. Resolution approving an institutional master plan application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning Article Two, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. to Central Catholic High School. Property owner for the Central Catholic High School campus located along Fifth Avenue and South Neville Street, zoned educational medical institution, 14th Ward, Council District Number Eight.
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Forgive me also, this is al- also along Neville. So, it's really, is it adjacent to the other rezoning?
So, this is, when Carnegie Mellon went through their institutional master plan, they asked for a portion of Oakland that extends into Central Catholics Campus to be rezoned to EMI, therefore necessitating any change at Central Catholic to go through an institutional master plan. So, that's what this is.
Wow. I missed that. When was that?
When we passed the Carnegie Mellon Institutional Master Plan. Oh, you're testing my memory. A couple of years ago, one year ago, something in there.
Got it. Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so really
There's a lot of moving parts. I appreciate my colleagues in Oakland keeping track of.
It's a lot going on in Oakland. Central Catholic is really looking to redo their gymnasium. They did reach out based on the same kind of email lists that Carnegie Mellon and their outreach team host, has to multiple neighborhoods, multiple, be, way beyond their, you know, their borders to even Squirrel Hill to explain what was happening here. So, they really did their due diligence in reaching out to the community.
Nothing but excellence from Central Catholic, I'll just say that. My brother was the Vice Principal, was there for 20 years, if you're wondering why I'm saying it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1343, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation? New Papers, Bill 1466.
Bill 1466. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with Paramount Pursuits LLC for technical assistance services to nonprofits awarded neighborhood economic development grants in need of capacity building in the amount not to exceed $41,000.
Motion to approve, discussion? Second.
With discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Want to come on up?
I hate when you send the two nicest people in the building to the, for me to question.
That means you're in trouble with her.
It's all good. I've got broad shoulders and I'm fat. Kelly Russell, Assistant Director, Community Development.
Good morning. Joshua Rolon, Program Supervisor, Community Development in OMB.
Always a pleasure to have Kelly and Josh at the table. Good to see you again. Thanks for updating me on this.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to learn a little bit more about it. So, did we hire someone for technical assistance last year?
Yes, sir. Previously, we had PACE. Josh works a lot more closely with the net, with the net, neco, yeah, Neighborhood Economic Development Grants. That's why I have him here also to speak better about it than I can.
And so, what type of technical assistance do we? Yeah, there's four recipients of $50,000? I can't remember.
So, now we're at four recipients of $50,000. We've been, every year, adding another group just to make sure we can grow the program at a good pace. And so, the technical assistance that Paramount Pursuits would be providing is, one, doing assessments, because we want to make sure that we're seeing progress along the way. So, we're looking at trying to do annual assessments of these groups and then through those assessments, determine what kind of kind of skills that they would need to build. We're putting them through a four-year program or we're providing support for four years. And we want to make sure that at year four, or I guess going into year five, an organization isn't just dropping off of a fiscal cliff in that they've developed some tools for fundraising so that they can find alternative forms of income once our grant support ends. So, the idea would be Paramount reviews, assessments done by PACE and kind of adapts previous, the previous assessment to bring in Belts Hoover Consensus Group, who is the new group that's getting funded, establish a baseline, and then run workshops that address skills that they see are needed to improve. And then fundraising will be kind of an important part. We've highlighted fundraising as an important thing in that.
Okay. And then how many repeat organizations do we have for this round of? I know this isn't for the net funding, but just as a refresher, do we have any repeat recipients?
Uh, for the capacity building?
No, 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 the, like, literally, the net grant. Yeah, net as a whole. We could probably get that information back to you. Okay, sorry, I thought it was four, I didn't know if there was like
So, the net, uh, for the capacity building grant, it's the four organizations and they're, and so they're
Oh, I understand. I get it. Yeah, yeah.
Not the whole net grant.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, that makes sense.
No, and that's why I was like
All right, that's the part I missed. All right, thanks. Any further questions?
Thank you. And any further discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I'm just curious, so where is this located? And was there an RFP?
Yes, there was an RFP conducted. So, Paramount Pursuits, I actually don't know where
So, it's not in Pittsburgh? But I do know that there were groups in Pittsburgh that did. I know CTEC, but they folded, but they were on the north side. They used to do similar work with our, our area, with the city. And there was the Bear Center for Nonprofit Management, they did stuff like this. I'm wondering why, what happened with those groups? Well, I know CTEC folded. What's going on with the Bear Center? Because I've not seen them on the agenda for anything lately.
We actually had, I mean, this is a couple of years ago now, but we actually had some preliminary conversations with people at Bear, the Bear Center. Sort of immediately after we had those conversations, they cut a lot of their staff. And so, I, I don't think that they actually operate out of the, the building downtown anymore. I think they are on RMU's campus now. So
Which still has a lot of Pittsburghers, but go ahead.
Yes. And, and so, I know that we've set, when we worked with procurement for the RFP process, which opened in October, we reached out to a few different organizations locally, or we shared contact information with procurement for a few organizations locally. The Forbes Fund, Equity Impact Center, PCRG were some of the ones that I know that we made sure to give contact information for. And, and so we released it out. I actually don't know, I know the Bear Center hasn't replied to bids for the past couple of years.
Mike, I'm really concerned is really the money that we're spending on it. And I, I feel like, I say this all the time, there's so many universities in this area that do this kind of work for free and that would welcome the opportunity to be at the table with the City of Pittsburgh to do some great things for us. And I just don't understand why we're not working with our universities more. So, that, that's my only statement, is I, I wish that we would do that more often. Engage them more. There's a lot of them that do this kind of work. Do you want me to get them for you?
No, 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 I was just going to say, I, I think we was, we, we have to RFP this work because of being
Well, you wouldn't have to RFP it if it was free.
Yeah. That's why I have a confi, the look on my face, I like, I don't, we have to check into that. I'd rather check into that just to make sure.
No, I know you didn't make those decisions. I'm just saying, in the future, I wish we would think more Pittsburgh and how we can more engage our universities and just more in general about Pittsburgh businesses and Pittsburgh companies. That's, if we are going to spend money. Thank you. But thank you for your work.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1466, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1405. Resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from Los Patrones Inc. located at 1138 to 1141 Freeport Road to the applicant, Riva Hospitality Management Inc. doing business as Riva Modern Indian Cuisine located at 220 North Highland Avenue, Pittsburgh 15206, pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code Statute 4461.
A motion to approve? Second.
Discussion?
I used to work on North Highlands, I love having a restaurant there.
Seeing none? All those in favor of Bill 1405, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? New Papers, Bill 1463.
Bill 1463. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the City Controller to enter into a professional service agreement and/or contract with the Binkley Canovee Group LLC for services associated with the popular annual financial report including accounting services, production, printing, and mailing cost not to exceed $40,300 over a term of two years.
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1463, please indicate by saying aye.
I'm sorry, can I just ask real quick? Do you know this is a local company? It is? Okay, good, thank you. I wanted to, because I know Pittsburgh mailing just folded because, you know, so many people outside of Pittsburgh weren't using, they were using people, companies outside of Pittsburgh, I should say. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1463, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? That concludes our, this meeting's agenda. We have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1234 relative to the Manchester Chateau Transit Revitalization Investment District Phase One Implementation Plan. Speaker registration will close at noon today, Wednesday. Friday, February 14th, with a session at 1:00 PM and 2:00 PM, Council will hold a briefing on the 2025 Bond Ordinance. Next week, Council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, and their standing committees meeting on Wednesday, February 19th, both at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the signup form on the Council Meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Any discussion from members? Councilman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, to report back to the people as well as to, to Council. I did have a conversation with the, with the second Vice President and the Vice President of the NAACP. And they, while, much like everyone around the table, you know, supports the concept of transparency and support the public hearing, they did want to let us know that the communication that we received via email as well as phone calls we may have received on behalf of the NAACP were not reflective of, of the, of the entire leadership of the NAACP and were done unilaterally, you know, on behalf of the, the current president. And they were, you know, very adamant about wanting me to share that information. I don't know what's going on internally, you know, at, at the NAACP, but I just wanted to share that. I don't think that takes away from, you know, from the importance of having transparency, you know, and us having a public hearing to discuss such an important matter as choosing the next leader of the Bureau of Police. But they, you know, and I don't think, you know, they made a statement one way or the other in my conversation with them of their stance on that. I think they support the same level of transparency that we're all for. But they did want to know that, you know, the communications that we received and that the media received over the last several days were not reflective of the branch and their have no plans of participating, you know, in a town hall or anything like that other than as private citizens, and I would welcome them to come, you know, to the public hearing that my esteemed colleague called for, that we all voted for yesterday. But they were very adamant about letting us know and for me to share, you know, with this body as well, with the public, that the entire organization, they were not aware of the communication, they did not approve of the communication. And, and that was Jamal Craig and Terry Minor Spencer were very adamant about me sharing that today. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I would just say, I think that a lot of the leadership has changed at the NAACP, and I don't know how reflective they are of the entire Black community, period, anymore. But I will say this, is that I have no desire of stopping or silencing anyone who wants to have a voice at the table about not just this issue, but different issues. We try so many times to have, you know, meetings and hearings and different things across the City of Pittsburgh. But what I will say is that I don't think that the public should, you know, have the final say in what happens with the chief. I do think that we should have, I mean, that is the job of the administration. Given the situation of what happened with the previous chief, there's a lot of concerns around this position. With an election coming up, there's a lot of concern about what happens. Are we going to end up paying another, you know, pension, higher pension if, you know, should they decide to leave? I think there's a lot of questions, or should the new, should there be a new mayor? I think there's a lot of questions I think there's a lot of questions surrounding the entire process. So, what I will say is that although, you know, you've spoke with some people, and obviously they have different opinions, and different people have different opinions there, I do think that a public process needs to be outlined, not just for this, for this current appointment, but for futures, you know, appointments for any chief. I think we, it's a position that truly affects a lot of people in some positive ways and some negative ways, depending on who we pick and what happens there, what can happen. And so, I do think it all merits a conversation. But I will say that when I spoke with the director, Daylon Davis, the paid employee there, he said that this in no way reflected on anybody in the leadership or anyone, or the director, or the chief himself. This was something that they just felt was important for the community to have at least a conversation. And so, I think we really need to outline, and I spoke to other people, I'm not going to say who they are, because they also do a lot of work in the, in the Black community and a lot of work with the, with policing, and what they had suggested was, you know, a series of meetings for any time we're doing this because of the effect it has on the community. So, I think we should outline that process next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Councilman Coghill.
I just, to change the subject, I just wanted to say thank you to Donna McManus. Today is Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. I made some rounds this morning, and I really do appreciate what they do. They're out there in the cold. They really are, you know, are eyes and ears on the ground. They know the children, they know children that are having issues, whether it be at home or at school. So, I just wanted to thank Donna and the Crossing Guards throughout the city, not only my district, but I really appreciate what they do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cale Smith.
I was going to say, we should just send something from city council to all the Crossing Guards to thank them for the day, even if it's just a rose or something, just something to let them know we appreciate them. Yeah.
Best job in the city, so I encourage anyone to apply, who's listening. Fill our positions.
An important job in the city, for sure.
Anything else from members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.